All right. Thanks for, everyone, for being here on this cold icy evening. We really appreciate you. We're glad to have our, one of our municipal partners, the Mayor of Coolamie here. Mayor, we're glad to have you with us tonight. And we're gonna call the meeting to order now and ask for Pastor Showalter, Ryan Showalter from Calvary West, to give us our invocation.
Thank you for having me tonight. On behalf of the church family at Calvary West, I bring greetings and also gratitude for the work that each of you does in this God ordained role that you have in the local government. So thanks to each of you for that. Let's pray together. Father, we are pausing now at the beginning of this meeting because it's right, God, to acknowledge you first. Before any business is conducted, before any discussions are had, God, we, we come to you, recognizing, God, that you create and sustain all things. And so, Father, we trust that you are in the process of this meeting as well. God, that that's part of the work that you do in sustaining all things, holding all things together through Jesus. So, God, would you be at work tonight? And each of the commissioners, God, and each of the participants in this meeting? Father, would you lend your wisdom to them tonight? Father, you promised in the book of James that if anyone lacks wisdom, he should ask, and that you'll give it generously and without finding fault. And so, God, I pray that it would be your wisdom that leads and guides, that it would be your love that, Father, is, is in our hearts and our minds. And, Father, I pray that you would bless our time tonight. Bless the work of the commissioners, of our county manager, of all of the men and women who are here, who work in the government, and all the different services, God, that they provide to the citizens of this county. Father, we thank you for the blessing that it is to live in a place with a functioning government. Father, we recognize that that is a blessing from you tonight. Pray all that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate you. Now, we'd like to, we'd like to say just a tad bit more. We thank our vets for coming and, veterans for coming and leading us in the pledge, but we'd like to say a word or two about them before they do that. Tonight, Mr. Trey Sprinkle is going to lead us in our pledge. Mr. Sprinkle graduated from Davie High School in 1985. He's a veteran of the U.S. Army. He was a paratrooper in the 82nd Airborne. He enlisted in 1981 and served until 1985. He had 52 jumps and obtained the rank of sergeant. During these years, he was deployed to Grenada during Operation Urgent Fury. He earned a parachute badge, combat infantry badge, an Army Commendation Medal, and many others. After service, he went to Forsyth Tech, became a welder, spending over 25 years in that career. At age 50, he decided he wanted to become a nurse and went to Forsyth Tech to obtain this dream. That's awesome. He has been a travel nurse, traveling to Seattle, Washington, Barrow, Alaska, three different times. Now, he is an ER staff nurse at Davie Medical Center. He's married to his beautiful bride, Deborah, of 38 years, and they have one son. Thank you for your service, and thank you for being here with us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank, thank you. Ethics and Conflict Disclosure.
Presenting North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019. I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest, respect any matter only proposed agenda which comes for a vote tonight. If so, please speak up and let us know before the agenda is adopted. Mr. Chair, seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Before we adopt the agenda, we are going to move an item out of consent, item 9D, Recreation and Parks Advisory Board Appointment. We will move that out of the consent agenda to new business, item 11A. Okay? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda with that amendment?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with that change.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right. Public comment period, Mr. Vogler.
Mr. Chair, we have one individual who signed up, Sherri Kiestler. Topic is 911. The public comment rules haven't changed since last month when you were here, Ms. Kiestler.
Good evening. I just want to say thank you. Thank you for not being afraid to stand up and say things others won't. Change will never happen if people don't speak up and most are afraid. This is just part of one of the several text messages I received after speaking here last month. From a former employee of this county. I've also received messages from current employees. Why should current and past employees be scared to speak up? That alone should tell you what you need to know about the people you've chosen to lead, the employees of this county. I'm curious, if I had not come last month, if anyone would have even known about the tragic events of October 6th and the role that 911 played in delaying care. Approximately 10 years ago, under the same administration, that communications telecommunicator put an address in wrong, didn't involve loss of life, no injuries, it was a bank robbery. They got the option plan, resign or be terminated. Why is that, why is this current event less punishment? While I was still employed at Davie County 911, there was an ongoing issue with a nighttime telecommunicator, telecommunicator sleeping during shift, even slept through lines ringing, even slept through shift change. He got a three-day suspension and then he got promoted. This is just a few examples of the pattern of lack of leadership currently at the 911 Communications Center. This is why good employees are leaving and have left. There are many more examples, but I've been asked not to include them out of fear of retaliation. Proper leadership should foster healthy and positive work environments. It should allow employees to speak up without fear. Leaders who make excuses and do not accept responsibility for their actions or lack of actions can lead to a lack of trust. And when you're sitting in that communications room for 12 hours, there has to be trust. October 26th was a direct result of failed leadership, and most definitely the end results are due to that. My question to you commissioners, and you, Mr. Barnett, how is this acceptable? How does this lack of leadership go unchecked or even unnoticed? The citizens of the county should feel confident when they call 911 that the person answering is knowledgeable and proficient. I don't feel like that right now. When any unit calls communications on their radio for assistance, no matter how simple or urgent, the person on the other end of that radio, they need to trust that they will get them what they need, no matter the uniform they're wearing, and make sure they get home at the end of their shift. Sadly, there's units that don't feel like that right now. Am I saying terminate everyone that makes a mistake? Absolutely not. I'm asking there be more accountability, actual punishment, and not, I know you messed up, but you just have to work through the holidays. I'm just asking that you all look a little closer at some things and talk to the employees. Everybody's scared. And it's, it was like that when I worked here. So, have a good night. See you next month.
Mr. Chair, that's the only one that signed up for public comment.
All right. All right. County presentations. Mr. Barnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations. First one being introduction of our new senior services manager. I'm gonna actually turn it over to our Health and Human Services Director Suzanne Wright to introduce Mr. Brent Harp.
I'm pleased to introduce Brent Harp as our new senior services director for Davie County. I don't know why I'm introducing him. He knows everybody in this room and beyond. He earned a degree in recreation management from Appalachian State University and then went on for his master's degree in recreational therapy administration at East Carolina University. He started with us December 16th and has been working very closely with me and his, his new team. Everybody thinks that he is my brother, so I wanted to make this official introduction now to let you know that he is not my brother. I think that's frowned upon by county policy. But he is very much part of our work family, and so we're, we're thankful to have him. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Brent and let him share more about his, about himself.
Thank you, Suzanne. Good evening. I think I met everyone, but if I'm not, had the pleasure of meeting you, Brent Harp. Like Suzanne said, I'm, uh, grown up in Davie County, very excited to be back. Took a 10-year hiatus. I worked for the Greenville Recreation and Parks for eight years. I was supervisor, I ran special populations, and then I did a brief stint working for Special Olympics North Carolina. I was the Western North Carolina Sports Director. But when this opportunity came up, I hopped right on it. Really excited to be back. I just want to say real quick that it's very, very obvious that our staff at the senior center cares deeply for our community and our seniors, walking into a really great situation with a great staff. So I want to give them a big shout out because they love the seniors like they are their own family, and it's very obvious. Little about, little bit about me personally, I have a one-year-old, which is another reason I want to get back to Davie County. And my wife works at Baptist Hospital. Her name is Katie. But, uh, yeah, very excited to be here and hopefully get to work with all y'all in the near future. And, um, just, she said I went to Appalachian and ECU, but my heart's in Boone. I need everybody to know that. Brent Shuff knows that. Well, uh, any questions?
Welcome.
You're excited you're here.
Thank you. I'm excited too.
Okay, partners. Jackie?
Happy New Year. Hope everyone had a, had a great holiday season. Thank you for the opportunity to come in, commissioners, to give you an update, my semi annual update. Karen, thank you for helping me get through this too. Want to start off and, I'll start off and talk about what we always do, focus on our members served, some of the numbers. So you'll see a little bit different because we've kind of changed since the last time I came. I, I think we had talked about we'd be managing a TATA plan. The state finally let us shove off and do that, and we started on July 1st doing that. So essentially, we have two Medicaid populations that we serve. One known as Medicaid Direct, and those are those members who are not covered in the North Carolina Managed Medicaid Project. They're outside of that. So we manage the behavioral health care needs of those. And then, Cleet Care Health North Carolina, they take care of the physical health side of managing care. Some of these folks we've been working with for a while now, so there's nothing really changing on our end. But you'll see on Medicaid Direct, serve just over 690 members presently. And I'm giving you a report based off the months of July 1st, July 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2024. Next, our TATA plans I mentioned, this is different in the sense that now we manage the entire care of, prior healthcare of your members. Everything from behavioral health side, obviously, to also everything when they go to their, to their family practitioner, their doctor, if they need an X-ray, if they, if they need pharmacy, which is a huge cost, but pharmacy, we kind of take care of the whole kit and kaboodle, maternal care. So, and inpatient care, hospital, hospitalizations too. So with that, we have, we're excited about this opportunity to really manage the care. You'll hear more programs that we have looking at how we do more prevention, how we can address those chronic diseases to be able to intervene sooner before they go to the hospital or, or health gets worse. So with that number, we've got 304 with served. That's gonna be a smaller number just because of the way the population is. And Medicaid numbers, again, we have the TATA plan, those members who have very high behavioral health needs but mild physical health needs. Whereas the standard plans, the private health plans, they have those who have very low behavioral health and high physical health. That's how the states kind of assign each group to us. So we're excited about that. I didn't mention penetration rate. On the Medicaid Direct side, it, we're falling into the national standard that they say is looking around one of, one of every four people in your plan you, that you're interacting with, engaging with. We stay consistently. I think with Davie County, we've went on a range of 24 to 26 typically. TATA plan's a little different. We're trying to find that way through because the state of North Carolina does something that's kind of new, no one else does, so we're gonna kind of march to that penetration rate as we go forward with that. And the third plan I mentioned, we might, we manage is those who are uninsured, who qualify for the state-funded recipients of state fund, or they eligible for, and be careful, eligible for state funds. Those were served 254 individuals this month. Oh, sorry, for that same quarter, the first quarter of state fiscal year 21, 20, state fiscal year of 25, the first quarter. Just want to give you also kind of a illustration of just how numbers break down from adults to the children, of those numbers from those three populations. And please pardon me, for some reason, the, the state-funded ones kind of fell off. There's that olive green color on mine, those state, those were served on state dollars. So I just want to give you a kind of idea, you can see it visually, just how we're kind of serving people, those actual members. And next, I want to talk about our members that are received with intellectual development disabilities. We've talked a lot about, I know here, about those innovations members. These members and families have significant needs, and with that, they, we're trying to be really mindful of their care. They're over 60, over 65% of the dollars we spend out are for these members. They're smaller in number, but for obvious reason, they have some pretty significant needs, as you can imagine, that they had to address. Right now, we have 195 Davie County members who are on the innovations waiver. With that, we also have quite a few, you see 118, who are waiting for a innovations waiver slot. That means that, that innovation, North Carolina Innovation Waiver Slots opens up all the services, but also gives them a certain pot of money that they can draw down each year up to 184,000 based upon their medical necessity for a variety of needs. So I know that you all and other counties have kind of advocated with your legislative representatives, try to get more slots, and we thank you for that. I know some of the folks who came before you, such as the Davie County Milhouse Advocates, they've also said the same thing, we want more dollars. And NAMI would agree, along with others. It's a general, when the general simply has funds, and they'll continue to ask, we can expand innovation waiver slots. And, and one thing that has happened that's a plus is that the Centers for Medicaid and Medicare Services approved North Carolina's innovations waiver. It's called a 1950I, 1915 innovations waiver. And with that, it opens up some of the innovation services to members who are on that register on met needs. So along with whatever they qualify for, whether they have Medicaid services and state-funded services, they now also have these 1915I services, which are, hopefully, we feel are very helpful. The folks who have them have stated how important they are. Now they're opened up, so these families can get those too. So we're excited about that. We hope that it increases that number receiving other services to go much higher than the 33.9% right now. Next, I want to just talk to you about some of the community highlights that's going on with, with our partners. First off, you've probably heard about our first community conversation about suicide we had earlier. Now, we've had a second one, November 9th. Real excited about this project. This is something partners has started in our other counties and, and offered to Davie County, and several organizations and community partners have came together to help make, pull this off. It's just to have that conversation about suicide, get information to family members and other citizens, so that they know someone who's struggling, they know who to call and what to do, looks at addressing the stigma related to that. In this community conversation, we bring in providers and various resource materials for them. One thing we also do is offer a, a training act where the question persuade and refer a suicide prevention training model that's nationally known. We offer that to this group. And so, hopefully, that whoever comes, they'll walk away with the information, how they can go forth, and some training if they choose to, to be able to interact and they see other people who are struggling. The numbers have been low, I'll be honest, the numbers have been low to turn out, but this is a topic that we kind of feel, we know that everyone's gonna rush to it unless you've been impacted by suicide. And even with that, we've had folks who have came, who have listened, and we feel to take that back out into the community. Because this is a topic too, that, again, stigma, people sometimes don't want to come forth and talk about. But we want to put the information out there, and hopefully, there are various gatekeepers who will interact with them and share that information. And again, a little public service announcement, we got a training coming up on the 23rd. And at the, at your, at your, at your new place now, we'll be at Davie County Senior Services. So we're excited about that. My excitement, I think I knocked this off. There we go. So with that, we're excited about that. And apologies, we have another event we just found out that we're gonna add to our, that we'll be doing, and I'm gonna, Karen's probably gonna throw something at me if I mess this We have another event coming up that I wanted the commissioners to be aware of. Okay, well, I'll just talk about that. I'll just talk about that. Thank you. We're also, another event coming up, we just got the flyer out this Sunday I got, so I apologize, I gave this to Karen on Thursday, so it wasn't available for that. We're doing our homeless point and count. We're working with various community partners, as you can see on your flyer, on being able to go out on January 30th from 4:00 to 6:00, but it's gonna go on longer than that. But just to be able to get a number of how many folks, an estimated number of how many folks are homeless in, here in Davie County. Thank you for that. What that does is, as you all know, health departments like the Health and Human Services Department and others, and providers and other community agencies know, whenever we try to go to bring in more dollars, more resources to, to serve the homeless, we can demonstrate this is a number they ask us. So we're looking forward to that. We're excited because, as you can see, it, it's really expanded and added, the, the community partners have came together, we're having, we brought food to it now, we're gonna incorporate health checks, and get into that preventive piece too, be involved, and you'll see the various resources. And we're gonna have the point and count, but also share these resources with the community. So another good, hopefully, one stop people can come to and get information, how they're dealing with folks who are going through homelessness, or they, people who are fearful of becoming homeless, ways we can interact with them. And we're excited about that. And again, you'll see some of the community partners that we've been able to pull on board. These, these organizations stepped up and said they want to help out and address this need. That's the end of my advertising and public service announcement. Through my presentation, happy entertaining questions that commissioners may have.
I have one question. Do we, Karen, do we have the PowerPoint? Is that in our packet?
Not yet.
Could you send that to us? Okay. My, my, the one brief question I have about the, the point in time, it says at the Scottish Inn's, is that, the homeless folks come to the Scottish Inn? How, how do you?
That's gonna be a kind of, I think, a gathering point where we have.
And then you move out from there? Okay.
They go all across the county, everything from going to various places, from bridges and other places you might find homeless at. It, it's a lot of people involved in this event to pull this off, but, as you said, it, it just goes out. This is just one point people can come to, if they happen to, if they happen to go down 601, they want to stop and then go ahead, and resources, but we're gonna be sending people out, or various people going out throughout the county.
So those that want to help would be at the Scottish Inn at 4 o'clock, and you'll move us, you'll move out from there?
Yes, that's correct.
Last year, we stayed stationary there, like.
Oh, you did? Okay, me, I misspoke.
We stayed stationary at the Scottish Inn's, and community paramedics brought some folks in from other places that they were aware of, but everyone got a hot meal, and then there were some other necessities that were given to them. They were made aware of the serving our neighbor, food distribution centers, so that was the best thing that happened last year at Point in Time is that community paramedics were able to take someone to a rehab facility. They agreed from that location to go, so we were pretty excited about that. But, but they, a lot of our employees know where to, to get, to find these people and bring them in so they can receive this, these resources and information.
Very good.
We're excited about this, this year's count, and what we're gonna be able to do. Unfortunately, there's a, the need for it, so we're gonna continue to try to reach out to these fellow Davie County residents who are on hard times.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you so much, Jackie. We really appreciate you. Appreciate all y'all do. Okay, Ms. Robin, audit?
Tonight, we have Cassie Wilson here from Martin Starnes and Associates to talk about the fiscal year 2023, 2024 audit, and just let us know, I'll be standing by in case you have some questions.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. So I know that you're already into 2025 and thinking about getting ready for budget for 2026, but we're gonna look back to June 30th, 2024, and go through those audit highlights, what we have done at this point. Which one? Oh, right here. Okay. There we go. All right. So we have issued the report to the local government commission, and they are reviewing that still, I think, over the holidays. There was a slight delay there, so hopefully, we'll receive that approval very soon so that we can get you your final printed copies, and then, of course, you'll have an electronic version. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so that is a clean audit opinion, the highest quality that we can give you. This year, with this single audit testing for federal and state, there were five programs in total that we tested. That does not include the cross-cutting procedures that we also have to do for state. With the detailed testing that we did and the compliance work that we did, we only had one item of note, and that was within the deficiency that we noted in the cross-cutting just for one program that we did. That information will be in the compliance report and the detail of that, and the procedures that have already been taken to address that and that training going forward, so that that doesn't result in anything else. But it was just a, a significant deficiency, not a material weakness. As far as your general fund summary, this is a snapshot of what your revenues and your expenditures ended with. So you can see you had an increase in both of those. For the fund balance and how those revenues and expenditures impacted it is shown here. So you can see that you had over $6 million increase in fund balance. That was, I believe, intentional as to where you were at with your revenues and your expenditures, cutting that back. The board always makes those decisions. This does not include what you have that's committed or assigned for projects either. This is just the total fund balance. So that's important to keep in mind when you look at this.
Can I interrupt?
Sure, go ahead.
Does that get us above the 25%?
We are right now just below it, at like 24.8%.
Okay.
We're really close.
We'll round up.
We're getting there. Well, can't we round up? You said no, so we'll see. We're close though.
All right, thank you.
They don't allow us to round up, so I'm just saying. We have to round down on everything too.
Karen won't let us round up. He's a nervous guy too.
I'm right there with you. Okay, so when you look at what the LGC focuses on, they want to see what the available fund balance is. They take out what is non-spendable, like receivables and inventory. Those items taken out, plus their calculation for what stabilization by state statute, which really focuses on what you have as a receivable. When you take that out, you get to your available fund balance, and that's over $19 million here. You can see that, that increase in fund balance also lended to your increase in overall available fund balance, which is something that the LGC looks at specifically. They do compare you as a group, not by population anymore, but by your general fund expenditures. So this is. So this is a, a focus for them. When it comes to the available fund balance, uh, that calculation looks at those general fund expenditures. So here you see what your fund balance available is in green. Those net expenditures that is a part of that calculation is in the red color there. So you can see how the line shows you how we have that total overall increase in available fund balance. And that's from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four. So that's good to see that continued increase there with your intentional, uh, building that. Now, when we look at your general fund revenues, we like to break down for you what your largest ones are, um, and take a little snapshot of those specifically. So in the green here, you have your property taxes that we're looking at. Um, the property taxes and then your red there is the intergovernmental. So that's your federal and your state awards. Um, those also have expenditures that are related to them. Most cases, that's related to a specific program. So we'll look at, um, some expenditures after, um, on the next slide there. And then the blue here is your charges for services. So whatever you have that's fee-based recreation or whatever that may be, um, that's what's in blue. So you can see you had some increases and some decreases in these, but fairly consistent from prior year to current year.
I have a question, if you don't mind. Is our enterprise fund included in the fund balance?
It is not. That is, that is looked at separately because, uh, for your general fund, that is considered your fund balance. But when we look at your enterprise, that is your net position because that's revenue generating specifically for that purpose. So, uh, I believe we have that on, not this slide, but the next slide, or two more slides and you'll see that. So just the general fund expenditures here, the major ones. Public safety is always a major one with the counties, uh, because of the amount that you have that needs to go towards that, what you budget for. And then the red is education, that's very common, uh, for those two to be your top two, uh, in expenditures with your general fund. And then general government, that is what is in blue. General government, that's including, um, the governing board, your administration, HR, elections, finance, IT, tax assessor, the legal, register of deeds, uh, public buildings, all of those are included in that general government. Now for those enterprise funds and specifically how those changed, um, you have operating revenues listed here for your water and sewer fund and the solid waste, um, the operating expenses. And then overall what that resulted in, whether over or under, um, once you take out expenditures from revenue. So you can see that, uh, water and sewer remained, uh, positive once you took out expenditures. And then that solid waste fund still has a little bit of a negative there. When we look at the cash flows from operations related to these, that kinda tells you what happened, um, throughout the year where you're getting enough cash back with your revenues versus what you were spending. So you can see the water and sewer had a positive amount for the cash flow from operations and their unrestricted net position ended positive over two million. And then that is compared to twenty twenty-three, you had some changes that you went through, uh, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. So you can see that comparison there. And then your non-major being that, uh, solid waste, you can see the cash flow from operations did have that decrease. And we saw that when we were looking at the previous slide with where you were, um, with expenditures being more than revenues for the year. And then that comparison as well for twenty twenty-three. So you can see that was about the same, um, in the solid waste from year to year. And then again, for your unrestricted net position. And remember when we're looking at unrestricted net position, that's taking out your capital assets and anything that's restricted for that purpose, um, when it comes to asset value. All right, are there any questions or things that you want to specifically touch on or make comment for?
Anything for?
Just a comment, um, that's a great report. Thanks to Robin and Cindy for all your efforts and, uh, thank you to Martin Starnes, so appreciate it.
Yes, and we appreciate all the hard work that they put into, uh, for us to be able to issue the report, get that done timely. Um, all the emails and, um, the back and forth we have as well as with social services. The Health Department, everybody is very accommodating, um, easy to work with. We appreciate all of their openness and willingness to get us everything. It was a very pleasant experience for us. We appreciate our continued work here, uh, with Davie County and everything that they've done. Once you get the financial statements, if there's anything that comes up, you know, as you're looking at that management's discussion and analysis section in the front, don't hesitate to reach out. Um, Robin can get ahold of me at any time and I'm happy to answer any questions directly or, um, by conference call or anything, okay?
Thank you. We really appreciate you. Thank you, Robin, Cindy. All right. County managers' report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I hope everyone had a great Christmas, uh, holiday time. One of the things I wanted to point out is on January thirtieth, uh, we will be having a combo meeting with our normal, uh, commissioner work session. We will have that in the morning and at the conclusion of that, we will roll into our, uh, pretty much annual budget workshop to discuss the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, uh, both of which will be open to the public if anybody would like to attend those meetings. Um, it will start on that, uh, Thursday at nine o'clock. And the only other thing I just wanted to let you all be aware of, um, I, uh, reached out to tonight's speaker and did ask them if they had any, uh, thoughts to come meet with me and I hope they will take me up on that. Uh, and I wanted to express to the citizens of Davie County that, uh, when it comes to public safety, we take that very seriously and that I feel extremely confident that all of our public safety, uh, employees and our public safety partners, um, if you need help, we will get to you and we will help you. And I feel very confident, uh, when it comes to patient care. Uh, so just wanted, uh, our folks at home to hear that and to know that we have some hard-working individuals who put in a lot of time and effort, a lot of training, um, to make sure that we're there when they need them. Um, so just wanted to, uh, say that. And that's all I have.
Any questions or Ryan? Okay. All right, uh, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second? All right, I'll, I'll give it to Brent, he, you know, alphabetically. Uh, any other questions? All right, all in favor? Okay. Outstanding. Uh, any old business? All right, new business, item eleven A. The, uh, Recreation and Parks Advisory Board appointment, Mr. Charles Curfies and Mr. Justin Lanning. Do I have a motion? Have a motion to appoint these two fine gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to get some conversation.
Okay, all right. Do I have a second? Brent's seconds, okay. Questions or? Conversation? Discussion? All right, seeing none, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Now we'll move on to commissioners' comments. Uh, Brent?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I hope everybody had a great Christmas and a happy new year and, um, look forward to serving you again this year. Make it brief.
Richard?
Uh, yes. I'd like to say, uh, thank you to the Mayor of Kulumi for coming to be with us tonight. Um, former Commissioner Michael Allen sitting there toward the front. Um, uh, welcome to Brent Harp back there for our senior center, um, pastor, uh, for leading us in our prayer tonight, um, Mr. Copeland. Really appreciate you coming from Partners and keeping us informed of the progress you make here in the county for our citizen. And, um, I'd like to give a big shout out for staff. For everyone who has had a part in helping to restore our, uh, general fund back to where it should be. That's been quite a job over quite a few years now, getting back to where we need to be. And also the people who volunteer here in this county to make Davie County what it is. This, that's what separates us, I think, from all the other surrounding counties is the number of volunteers that we have that, that, uh, give their time to make this a better place for everybody to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as always, I appreciate everyone coming out, especially tonight, kinda some rough conditions for us people in the South. So, uh, but appreciate you being here. Um, I want to welcome Mr. Harp. I've heard some great things about you, so look forward to meeting you and working with you. And, um, hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And, uh, we got a lot of great things going on upcoming year and look forward to working with everyone. I will say the audit report, um, while our policy, not to get wonky, but we're, we're back to being financially, we've always been financially sound, we've spent money very judiciously, but, um, we're back to our, one of our very basic policies. So again, I appreciate all the work and everyone's commitment to helping us get there. See you next month, I hope.
Benita?
I'll just echo all the thanks that everyone passed out, everyone that's here with us tonight. Um, Pastor Ryan and, um, our veteran Trey and Jackie and Brent, we are excited that you're here. Um, I, I will say, I'm sorry that Sherri left. I wanna say thank you to Sherri Kiesler for coming here tonight to speak because whether we wanna hear what she's got to say or whether we don't wanna hear what she's got to say, for her to come to this meeting and stand up in this public forum and speak her mind as opposed to Facebook or just behind closed doors, that takes a lot of courage and that takes a lot of strength. And I applaud her for standing up for what she believes in. Happy New Year, y'all.
I'm getting ready to read a couple paragraphs here, we're going into closed session. But I will say this, um, this coming weekend, uh, it looks like Friday and Saturday gonna be kinda rough. That's when the rubber meets the road, when Don Howard and his group and the sheriff and his staff and Johnny Lambert and their staff are out fighting the ice and the cold and the snow. Uh, um, that's when it, that's when it really, that's when the rubber meets the road. And so I, I echo what Richard said, thank you to all our staff. They're probably, they're folks I'm missing in terms of, uh, in terms of what happens when the weather gets rough. But remember, when we were all, all for Christmas vacation, enjoying with, with our families, there were folks, there were folks on the road, keeping, keeping our homes safe, keeping our streets safe. Uh, and, and we never wanna forget those guys and ladies. So thank you for all you do. Now, here we go. Uh, we're going into closed session per, uh, statute one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A three to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. The public body may consider and give instructions to an attorney concerning the handling or settlement of a claim, judicial action, uh, mediation, arbitration, or administrative procedure. If the public body has approved or considered a settlement other than a malpractice settlement by or on behalf of a hospital in closed session, the terms of that settlement shall be reported to the public body and entered into its minutes as soon as possible within a reasonable time after the settlement is concluded. Item one forty-three dash three one eight point one one A six to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee or to hear or to investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance, uh, by or against an individual public officer or employee. There's no periods in any of this stuff. I mean, it's like, yeah. Uh, so we're going into closed session. Uh, we'll be back out. We do have one piece of business that we have to deal with after that closed session. So we will be back out here, but we really thank y'all for being here. And if you wanna wait, we'll be back here after a while, okay? Thank you. Okay. Richard's second. Okay, all in favor? All right, here we go.
All right, do we have a, a motion to go back into open session? So move, all right. Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Finney, all in favor? All right, we're back in open session. We have item fourteen, improvement of, approval of settlement per North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash three two five. Ed, or Brian, did y'all wanna make a comment on that? Uh, okay, all right. Do I have a motion to approve?
That is to approve what? The, the dollar amounts?
Uh, I have, that's what I have on the agenda is, uh, if you, if we need.
A motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one at sixty-nine point five million and the twenty-two through twenty-four at eighty-eight point five million.
All right, do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
All right, Mr. Poindexter makes that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Renninger, uh, any other questions? And Karen, you'll get that in the, uh, minutes. Okay, all right, all in favor? All right, seems good. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Poindexter, we have Mr. Brent, uh, all in favor? All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.